There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the Pro Township zoning board of appeals meeting for Monday, February ten, two thousand twenty-five. We'll call the meeting to order. And we've got the agenda for tonight in front of us. And I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve that agenda. All favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, agenda approved. We've also got the minutes from the January sixth meeting last time. I have one comment. Before we make a motion here, but on page two. Under. The subject of application escrow. Where Weiss, it says, the first sentence where it says Weiss describes a large application. I think that should, that that actually should say two applications. Instead of a large one. So I think. That makes more sense. For what was discussed last night. Beyond that, I don't have any other comments or edits. Anybody else there?
Motion to approve minutes as amended.
Support. We have a motion and a support for the amendments as made. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright. Our next topic this evening is for the public hearing before us. And I'm gonna ask that Mika, can you present that to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the application in front of you is a request for a, there are two requests on this parcel. One is for a rear setback of ten feet where fifty feet are required. And the second is for a setback of ten feet for a side setback where a front setback required. Um. And that front setback being forty feet. Now, this is a little bit of an unusual one when it comes to the side setback in particular. This is a private road and according to the definitions and ordinance, private roads clear up from the guard setback. But it really functioned as more of a side yard. It's, they're only about three persons back there accessing. That private road, so that's kind of the context for that, for that application.
So I got a question. Can you, can you elaborate a little bit more for us? I guess on the private drive. Um, requirements. For the offset or for the setback.
So. The private road ordinance that we have doesn't make a distinction between smaller and larger private roads. So a private driveway that's just got two or three under the ordinance is considered a private road. And so that means that, that, that side yard, that front yard setback. Um. I, that's probably something that we want to take a look at in the future, but that's why that, why I ask you guys to review that front yard setback.
So it's almost, since it's a private drive, is this kind of, I guess in theory, like a cornered lot?
Exactly.
Okay? But with a private, we're still saying that the forty foot applies to it.
Yeah, that's what the coordinate says.
Okay. That's what I just couldn't understand personally, trying to get my head around that.
I, I suspect that it's not, um, it wasn't put into that context. Anyway.
Hmm. Okay, thanks, Mika. Um, at this time, I guess I'm gonna, I'd like to request that if, um, the applicant is present, that. They come up and help explain anything further that Mika hasn't already explained to us. If you. Feel that's necessary. If you don't mind signing in your name and address and. Announcing yourself to us, that'd be great.
Uh, my name's, uh. Bob Bodie and I'm the. Applicant for. The parcel three hundred oh five four. I don't know if you guys have this sheet. So you can, kind of gives you an idea and then there's another sheet. Um. It's just blowing up a little bit and you can see those two drive, those two driveways right next to each other. And. The first one. Is the setback. So if you look at the first sheet with the little. Uh, blue on it. You can see that this lot doesn't go back as far as the one to the north and the one to the south. So. What I'd like to do is if you look to the house to the north, which is one oh nine, three hundred dash oh three two. With the setback being at fifty feet, like the house would be in front of. The, uh. House to the north. The rear one, uh, I could never get it back far enough to align with that one. So. And we really want to put the house to the back because. Otherwise, it's gonna end up being. Close, close to the road than we really like it. Like for a driveway and then to leave the trees there. And I think I wrote it in the. Application there, um. That's why we want to do that one. And I talked to the property owners around there and they also stated that. They don't have a problem with it, the ones I talked to, which is, uh. Eighty-nine, three hundred oh fifty-five. He owns all, he owns that three acres there. And when he bought the property, the guy prior to him subdivided it. With the minimum requirements. I'm thinking without thinking about. How far. Uh, how close the house would be to the road. So. When we bought the lot. Um. We didn't really realize. Our, our plight. But. How, you know, where were, it wasn't aligned with the rest of the properties. So now that we're thinking about building on it, we bought it like in two thousand seventeen. And that was a big concern, um. Before we start building, it's where we're gonna put the house. So. We'd really like to put it back there. The, the guy that owns the three acres said, I don't care if you put the lot. You know, on the property line, it's fine with me because we're never gonna build anything there. And the lot, the property that he has. Of eighty-nine, three hundred oh fifty-five, his driveway goes through there. So that's never gonna be buildable. The way I understand it. And talking with Mika because the property that's left over, so. Um. He doesn't care where I put the house on there. And then in regards to, and if you look at the smaller one. Um, you can see that just two twenty-five foot driveways there. And I wanted to put the driveway right next to the other twenty-five foot driveway. And I called the road commissioner, John Gutierrez, and he said, um. Well, why don't you just put the driveway? You know, share driveway. With the, it says one oh one, three oh two. Oh two. Oh zero. The one right to the north. And he said. He doesn't really have a problem with it, but he's not really sure how the. The property is actually defined. I mean, he owns it. And he looked into it a few years ago, so. He said, see what you can find out about it. I, uh, I would consider letting you. Share the drive, my driveway, which would start right, if you look at it, there's a little fence post there. Um. And John, the road commissioner, said you can start it, you can start the driveway as long as you turn in. Thirty-three feet from this, from the center of the road. And he explained it, um, and I think he wrote a letter to Mika. Um, which I never saw, so I don't know what he actually said in the letter. In regards to that, maybe you could. Help me out there. Okay. The other thing is, is if I put, he doesn't want the driveway, three driveways in a row, so he encourages us to try to. Make it work that we could pull in on, on that, share that driveway. Otherwise, the driveway. Has to be. Right in front of the one oh five a lot, uh, it's directly across the street on one sixty-eight. To the west, um. I think it's, there's a house and the number on it is ninety-six, four eighty dash zero zero eight. So that would put the driveway. Kind of like right in the middle of the lot. Which, because the lot, the depth of the lot and to get. You know, to have a driveway go into the garage, which I really want to put on the north side of the house. Um. It just would make it more difficult and there's some trees in the way there. It's really hard to see on here, but. I want to leave all the trees in the front. As much as possible, so the house is kind of protected from the road and gives it a woodsy feel. Um. And, and regards to the other variance of the forty feet. Uh, for the side yard. Um. Like I said, when I talked to the owner of that. That owns that driveway, he said he doesn't really know what it is. There's two houses back there. There's two driveways there. The, the driveway all the, the twenty-five foot driveway all the way to the north just feeds one house. And the twenty-five foot driveway to the south. Which is directly parallels the property feeds his house and one other house. And that's, that's all that it can do. Um. So I talked to. John, the road commissioner, and he said, as far as he's concerned. That you could have up to five houses on a, I, I'm calling it a flag lot. But through a little investigation, the road, the twenty-five foot road. Would never be allowed now. I think it's supposed to be forty feet. If I, if I have my information right. So it's, it's, it's not conforming already. Um. We just want to put a house on there. Away from the road if possible. And if, and if the forty foot side yard easement wasn't forced, then. That would only leave like fifty feet to put the house on. Minus the ten, so it'd be like, it'd be like a forty foot footprint to put the house in. And. I think I made a typo on one of the letters that I wrote up. To make it unbuildable, I wrote buildable, so. To us, it's. I mean, with that kind of dimensions left over on it, be like. Wouldn't be something I'd want to build on. I don't know. So that's what we're looking for is some leeway there. Um, I didn't really realize that there was a forty foot setback on the side yard until we started, uh, looking into it, applying for the rear setback one. Um. I don't know if I would actually put the house ten foot off the rear, the rear, but I just want to have the option. Uh. Depending on what house plan, we have one, uh, picked out now that's like sixty-five feet deep. So I know, and I want to put a one-story up. Because I'm getting older. I want to live, you know, retire there and age in place there. So. I really don't want to build a two-story house if. Um, if I can help it. I might have an attic up there or something, but, um, I'm not really sure. I just, I don't want to find out where I stand with. Um, what we have. And what I look at the, um. These drawings, and if you look at both of them. I don't really see where it would really interfere with anybody. Um. Where the house is. Um. And I don't know if the, if the guy that owns eighty-nine, three hundred oh fifty-five is here. I talked to him, but, and I, I've called him. And, uh, she already told me, like I stated in the letter, just put it wherever you want. The only one that, that I did call last week. Just to let him know that I was coming and make sure he got his notice. Was the sheer driveway, that the, the driveway that's twenty-five feet directly to the north. Which goes back to, uh. The two houses back there. One of them's ninety-seven, three oh two. Dash oh two one. And he, he uses that driveway and then the house right next to it, which doesn't have a number on it. Um. On my drawings, anyway. But that's, um. I forgot his last name. Um. Do you know his last name? Toby. Toby. Are you here? Oh. Oh, Kurt, yeah. Um. Uh, so anyways, that's about all I can say is.
Okay.
Just trying to build a house and. Develop the property. Possible.
Perfect. No, appreciate, appreciate it. Thanks for the explanation.
Alright.
We may have questions for you later, so.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere. Um, at this time, I guess I'll ask for anyone, anyone else in the audience here that's got, uh, any comments for or against the project? That you could come up and share those thoughts with us, please. Now's your time.
Hi, I'm Su Shulee. We're actually one oh nine, so we're right there.
Sue, can you, can you sign in too?
Right here.
Yeah, if you could sign in.
Oh, sign in, sorry.
There, have you sign in?
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're actually, okay, we're one oh nine and we've been there for thirty-six years. Um, I have a problem with the side, with the ten foot. Off the, the road. Being that it's actually supposed to be forty feet. That's quite a bit difference. And it's. Makes it. I don't know, way too busy right there too with so close to build right on there. That's actually a busy, busy driveway. There's two houses, but they both have families and. So we have an issue with that. I don't think for code wise, I don't think. That's a lot different than what it's supposed to be. So. I know all of us in Park Township have to agree by and go by the code, so. I guess that one we don't quite understand, but, um. The fifty feet. Back, which ten foot, um. I guess if it was pushed more over. Towards the other way. If, maybe they could get away with that, but, um, I just, we have an issue with the only ten feet off the. Off the road. So I know we've had to abide with everything by code and what we're all supposed to do, so. So that's just my thoughts and how I feel. Okay?
Thanks, Sue.
Yep.
Um, I'm going, um, we are the one oh five north one sixteenth. So we're just to the north of, of the property. I'll just read what I submitted to the board just. A while before the meeting. I will attend tonight's hearing before the board regarding the unspecified property on. North one sixteenth. The letter did not indicate exactly, but. Could figure out what it was. Um, as the letter did not specify the intent of the owners or the reason. The setback variances are necessary. It was difficult to submit a written response. While I have no right to prevent development on land I do not own. I do have a vested interest in maintaining the wooded areas around my home and others. And not allow the building density and lack of consistent zoning to take place in my neighborhood. So I guess to elaborate on that, th- this was very clarifying. I. From the letter, I had no idea whether an apartment building was going up there or, uh, you know, a car wash or what. So. Thank you for that clarification. Um, I guess the only objection I have is that, um. And I, I appreciate you saying the setback from the road is, is your intent. You know, it is a wooded area. We've. Uh, years ago, we've been there almost thirty years. Um, we had to go through. A big process with a conservancy and the ventils. When they were still alive to try to. Preserve as much wooded area in that area as possible. That's why we have the conservancy behind us. So I guess my objection without knowing anything. But what was in the letter is to better understand why these variances were necessary. And to what extent it would. Kind of take away from the wooded nature of the area. So that, those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Glenn. Is there anyone else? That'd like to speak for or against? Project? Seeing none, equal.
I record cabinet. Um. I own eighty-nine, I'm Don Valdek, I own eighty-nine north, which is over him on his property on three sides. Uh. I encompass him to the south and to the east. Um, he and I have had several conversations about his concerns with the setback. Um. Trying to get the best positioning for his home. Um, it's unfortunate the way the. Property was allowed to be subdivided, in my opinion, to begin with, which you guys would have probably been involved with originally. Um, when. I bought the property, it already. Been, had that flag lot, as Bob likes to call it, cut off of the front of the property that was originally part of my parcel. So, that being said, I. Really don't have any objection to Bob positioning his house. Where he requests it to be put, because my house is six hundred feet off of one hundred and sixty-eighth. I won't. Ever see where his house is. The other people that have spoken, that are more in contact with the house, be closer to him, so. Um, but I'd just like to, you know. Say that I, I really don't have any problem with what, with what he's asking. Okay?
You can sign in to your first. And you're naming it?
Don Valdek.
Done. Thanks, Dan.
You bet. No, because my, he doesn't, there's no access from the south. Let me put it all the way to the northwest corner of the parcel. Which gives him only access to a hundred and sixty-eight or town square. So that's the only way in or out without actually having. Some sort of easement off my property, which I'm not willing to do. Not gonna cut another driveway. Off from the south. It would still be, it would still have to be a deed of easement for him to do that.
Hey, Glenn, you want to, yeah, do you have a question you want to come up and ask?
Yeah.
Please.
It was a, uh, question that comes to my mind that you brought up is the possibility of the sheer driveway. With the two houses that are behind us. Now, to me, that. You know, eliminates the need for tearing down more trees, um. Changing the aesthetics of all of it. From the township perspective, is that legal? Does it? Does it meet zoning codes? I mean, that's a great idea.
This is, the road commissioner suggested that I do that. I would, I'd prefer to have my own driveway. And he said, why don't you see if we could share a driveway, because that would be less driveway stuff on one sixty-eight, which is. Which would be less confusing for people driving by. And he's the one who gave me the idea.
Okay.
I mean, I wasn't even considering. I just thought it would be free driving, so. And, uh, and I don't want to take the freedom down either.
Yeah.
I don't want to kind of fuckin' take your ass.
Actually, if you did your own driveway, there would be four, four driveways right in a row. And I know that because whenever we have people over, they can never find my driveway. They go up and down three of them. It, it packages, yeah, yeah. So I, to me, that would be a great solution if it's acceptable to you and it's acceptable to this group.
And if Kurt, I haven't talked to him. I was told, they, they called up and I texted them, I don't know if he's out of town or whatever. He doesn't really know, he didn't really know what, what it was. He went through this before trying to find some stuff out, so he just forgot about it. But, you know. Get some, get some facts, get back. Uh, I haven't seen the letter that John, the road commissioner wrote. And what, what he actually said in it, in the conversation, I couldn't know what I had. He said, yeah. Try to get that.
Okay. I, I think that changes the dynamics again, the thing that's acceptable to you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's comparable to me.
But it's up to Kurt, really, I mean. Uh, there's.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let you continue a little bit sidebar if you need to, but I'm gonna continue. Uh, is there anyone else that has any comments? With that, okay. I'm gonna open it up for some more discussion. But I would like to close the public hearing first. So I'll do that. And then I guess before we start discussion, Mika, there was, there was a comment about a letter from Ottawa County that you received. Can you share some of the? Insight on that?
Definitely relevant. It's definitely relevant to the application.
Okay.
Driving a question, kind of one, like you said, you're trying to get some more information on, step back to one, um. That doesn't change based on, um. So they, the, the road commission has separation standards for driveways. Uh, and I think all of these are probably able to go together and living the life that they would prefer. So there is this option for a driveway, anybody center from price of other view. Across the street from another driveway, um, other than Maritime. They, the, the road commission would prefer that this comes off that shared driveway. For safety sake, just.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know.
Makes sense. So, is there? Is there ever? A point, this is really unique, obviously, to the, to the township, but. Like I believe there, there's probably one instance of, like a private drive like this that there's multiple ones off of. Is, is, is there ever such a case where it's named? Like given a name? And then the addresses can be associated to that?
It's been, it's been, it's been built recently and I can't say it exactly what it is, but, um, there have been a couple of those. Probably five years that I've run it by. That are, so anything that's built now has to be. Named as a private, so these are.
Yeah, it just might help eliminate the confusion of.
Yeah.
Passive drive approaches, executive, you know? That's all. They hang one through my head. Um. Okay, thanks. Well, like I said, I think we. Kind of turning it over here to the board for all of us to have a conversation about it, but. It is pretty unique and. Um. You know, I understand the applicant's desire to have this thing away from the road as far as possible and. It's hard for me to just gather. Knowing this is a, a conforming site. It is compliant with the areas that we have, right? I mean, that I can see, right? We're over fifteen thousand square feet. For the property, so. Um. It does. Uh. I guess that we don't have any averaging shown for the setbacks off of one hundred and sixty-eight, but you've got it listed, I saw, right?
Yeah, there, so the averaging comes into play if they're, and the, the average, the way from the front, I said that. He's asking to have a thing for the, for the road, but it's not really playing. So I didn't do those. Um, I think we can add them and see what they. I think we add up and see what the average is.
Okay. Well, I'm just. Yeah, I know, I know the owner of the adjacent property eighty-nine, he was telling us that. He doesn't care where it's put. I mean, that's, that's him, and that's his property right now, so it's a future property owner, right? And it does seem. I don't know, my initial thoughts are just. The hazard, the hazard of having this thing adjacent to the private lane does seem very close. My opinion. I also feel like. You know, the ten-foot setback, albeit very small, and unseen by all the neighbors.
What about going more, you know, like, this direction towards, would that be?
Right, going south, whether, you've got fifteen feet to the south edge.
Yeah, but it all the way back to.
Yeah, we did the inverse.
That would at least give more frontage on this private driveway. And the other question I wanted to ask Mika. Is, one of the letters we have here makes reference to a fire hydrant. Where would that be placed on this map?
It's, it's off, it's right in northwest corner of this, yeah. Of his lot, it's like right, it's like right here on the street now.
You can see it on, on his photo. It's just a little yellow dot.
I, I am gonna add, so we've got, so we did have two letters. Both from folks that were here tonight, one for, and one was not sure, Glenn was not sure, but it sounds like. It was more. In favor, I guess, of what this is, depending on what, you know, that comes off of a private drive. But I just wanted to state that for the record, that we do have two public emails commenting. About, and at the time, one was opposing and one was unsure. I, I don't know, I, again, just go back to the, the size of the lot, seems very available. We've got it set, the applicant is asking for, it looks like here, ninety-four feet off. The setback for the right of way. From what I can see there, right? We're also viewer, let's say, let's say he complied as minimal, I just go, just goes through my mind, you know. Quite a minimal requirement of forty feet here, he's still got, so he's got fifty-four feet in front of him. To get that thing out there, to still be compliant. For the sake of the entire property, but. I don't know, are they here to redesign it? Sorry. I don't know if anybody else has comments about. This overall. But you, I do feel, I personally have a problem, I guess, with how close it is to that private drive of ten feet and. Yes, I guess my ask applicant, are you, are you willing to consider a, a different option there for that, instead of the ten feet or?
Well, I'm looking at this drawing here. With the two driveways. And I'm thinking the house of one oh nine, three hundred oh three, the house right across to the north, I don't think that's northern. I don't know what that is off the property line to private road.
No, that's a private drive.
A private drive.
We're a private drive and they're.
So, this. Yeah, this, this driveway, right, but what that, what, how far is your house out there? Your property line?
We are ten foot up.
Okay. So that's what I was trying to add, I didn't, you know, at the time when this was, when he, whenever he subdivided the slot, I mean, if he, I think, I would think that if. You know, it had to be forty feet off the private roads, it's your ten foot off. That, that would leave, with a ten foot on the, on the south side of the property, that's gonna leave forty feet to put a house on. And with being ten foot off the side. So I really wanna put on, like, put a house that gets a lot of sunlight, so I wanna have windows on there, so I. Stepped out the door and I went, and I had a forty-foot wide house to build, with a garage access. But they put the garage underneath the house.
It's very momentary there.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I, I. I, I give some shots, it's all pretty much even with the road, I had some. Pretty much the same as yours, and in, in grave, when I was out there, it's about the same as what his house is, too, so it's all the same.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna return this back to the board a little bit, so sorry, for interrupting you, but we've gotta continue our discussion up here. So, you can continue your conversation quietly, if you don't mind, but we're gonna continue ours up here.
So.
And just going back to the, like, the idea, you know, like, we're not here to redesign it, but it's, it was like, if it was, uh. It seems like, you know, maybe looking at turning how, I'm pushing it this way, would give more space here. Or moving it over as close as possible to this line would at least buy a few more feet on the side. On that driveway, but it's not, I don't see any way that you could really get it into code.
If we've got to, I mean, we've got to, um, two items regarding this that we're gonna look at tonight, we're gonna divide it up, so we've got the side yard. Setback is, is one set of standards we're gonna have to review. Or we're gonna have the rear yard, and we're gonna have the rear yard to apply the same standards to. So we've got two cases here to look at. I guess that's why I was asking you if there's a way to eliminate one of them, in the event we don't approve it. Would you be willing to take a lesser relaxation?
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of the, that being a road that he had built, you know, since the house to the north is ten foot off the lot line, I just assumed, which. Might say, that I would have ten foot setbacks, if that was the property. And I looked it up, I, I wasn't aware that that road, that twenty-five foot road is now considered a road. That it was a self-described one. And Mika pointed it out, which is great, because I would have never even thought, I just would have thought I'm golden.
Sure.
I just don't wanna walk out the house and be on the property line, and otherwise, I, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't orientate the house, be on the north side of the house. I'm like, it's something like that.
Sure.
Got the garage on the north side there, kind of, and the house will be, you know, we'll be walking around the house. And it's, you know, like, we had a patio, it would be on the south side. I, I can't imagine anybody that would watch that lot to build a house all the way to the south side, and then put their yard and their deck and run it over.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I guess, there's, there's all kinds of opportunity, I see, but I just, you know, we're looking at what we have right in front of us, and I just. I see other opportunities, but. Well, Mika, do you know when the, that private road change may have occurred, like, from the ten feet to now forty?
I don't know, I, I'm not sure when the private road ordinance came in.
Okay.
And either flag lots as well, which are also not permitted, so somebody's been around.
Okay, so before us, again, we've got. As a staff memo, I'm gonna reiterate, just we've got a rear setback with. Four standards to review and the same set of standards applied. For the side setback. Either more conversation or looking for a motion of, if we get there.
Maybe if we just look at this first setback, that seems pretty easy, the.
Rear setback?
Yeah, maybe we can just resolve that one first.
Yeah, just wanna give it a shot. So we've got section thirty-eight seventy that applies. Again, with the four standards. We can help out with that.
Yeah, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to make a motion to approve the, uh, ten-foot setback on the back line.
The rear setback, yeah.
The rear setback. And, uh. And then I, I have to go through this, that's what I have to do.
Yeah, yeah, so this is standard.
Okay. Okay, so, um. Based on it, it, the standards, section thirty-eight seventy, the strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, regulating the minimum area yard setbacks, frontage height. Bulk density or other regulation would render informity with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. So, um, it, it's with the agreement of the landowner from behind and the request of the. Property owner, it doesn't, it doesn't seem that it would be unnecessarily burden, burdensome on either party. Um, granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as to other property owners in the zoning district, if a lesser relaxation. Then that applied would give substantial relief to the property owner and be more consistent with justice. To other property owners of the district, Board of Appeals may grant a lesser variance, provided the other standards are met. I, I, um, to me, it looks like there is no, um. Doesn't seem to be an issue, because again, the property owners are in agreement for that, and. And the plight of the property owner applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property. The odd shape or natural feature like the stream or wetland, and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. And again, um, to what information that we have here, I, it seems like he's doing his best to preserve the. The trees and the, the woods and everything, and it just, um. You know, makes sense with what we, what we see here to, um, go ahead and approve that. Setback, ten feet. Is, okay, great, the, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. So, um, again, the parcel was established, the size of the parcel in depth in two thousand and fifteen. Um, and it. And, and, uh, again, he did not. Create that, so it meets that criteria.
Very good, thanks, Kim. So we've got a motion to through the rear yard setback.
You have support?
Do we have support? I'll support, support, or support it. We'll take a vote on it, I guess, for, for that, um. You wanna do, can we do, have Mika do that?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Okay, so the variance has been approved for the rear yard setback. Uh, now we've got the side yard. Setback. To discuss, or looking for a motion. I guess, either way. Yeah, ten feet or forty feet is required. Well, I guess I, I still wanna, I like to propose, if, if there is, if there is one, if this doesn't go well, I mean. When we deny it, would you be, right now, or be willing to have a real lesser?
My, my goal is, if you look at the sheet, was, for the rear setback, was to line up with the house to the north, so that I'm not sticking out in front of them. You know, they're, they're driving, they're looking out, they'd be looking at, at a house, either way, they're gonna be looking at a house, I. My goal was to get it to the back, I wish it was as deep as there, but it's not. And when, and when the lot was subdivided, I'm just really curious now, when this forty-foot setback came in. To a back, was it after it was approved, after two thousand and fifteen, because. Like, like I said, that leaves like forty-foot. Building space with lines on the lot, with a forty-foot setback, so it's really not like a corner lot, like, I live on a corner lot now. That I'd like to add on to, but because it's not a corner lot, the setback is the front and side, so.
Yeah.
That, that's where we started out, yeah.
I haven't seen this yet, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's forty, I mean, if that, I would think that if they would have been considering that to be a, a forty-foot setback, they wouldn't have allowed to put a ninety-foot lot up. Because your house would be basically, that's what I, you, you'd have a forty-foot footprint for a house with wide. I don't know. Ranch. Forty foot wide. Pretty long, it gets, where, what is that?
I under, I understand your argument, yeah, but we're gonna continue to, I just wanna ask, we, we're kinda beyond the rear yard thing now at this point, so. That's been approved.
Okay.
So, we're talking about the side yard now, oh, sorry, the front yard, essentially. We're calling it the side yard, but it's a front yard, it's being compared to a front yard requirement of forty feet. Right. Side setback, yeah, ten-foot side setback, where a front setback of forty feet is required. Because we're sure you get it, right? This is a drive, or a public drive, private, public, private drive.
So, if. The, the person meets requirements and under the, we're required to put properties, the same, that, that is done. Uh, but we can look at that, it's one of the things that we can recall, especially. Is that sometimes what it is, in practice, they put it, so, a forty-foot setback, that was very small, private. One similar to this, it wasn't private road, uh, but it was a small, really, really, that was a corner lot. Within the last couple of months, and you remember, and they were similarly situated on, kind of a, a small. A small drive, and that would have been traffic, so, the reflection is that there were other houses that were similarly situated. Uh, that they did allow some kind of, um, really, in this situation. You know, the proximity is a little bit different here, but.
Is there a specific ordinance? This is the private or public?
Yeah.
Forty feet?
It's, it's in, um.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, the setbacks, the setbacks requirements are spread out in quite a few different places, so. I wanna say that it's, it might be in definitions, as well, but again, it's, it's a required setback. Now, I, the private road ordinance is one that's on the shortlist to be rewritten, and I tend to think that this is something that would be. When, I, I don't think there's a. Saying, almost back to a portable consideration.
Yeah, my. My. My opinion about this is, again, it's, it just seems to have, it's having it that close, and there's room on the south side to comply. So, that's where I stand. I feel like you should inverse it. Move the house, then be on the south side, within your fifteen feet off the drive.
And that's a lesser relaxation.
Maybe a lesser relaxation.
Lesser relaxation, not the total meeting code, but lesser relaxation.
To me, that makes a lot of sense. Is the applicant willing to consider that as a concession?
What, number fifteen feet? Um, I, I would say what I could get, I don't know exactly what I'm gonna do, because when I walk out of here, I'm, my brain's kinda going, like, well, what do I put out of the property now? I, I just, I, what, what's really bothering me now is the fact that it was actually subdivided. You know, with a forty foot, knowing that it was. With a forty foot, knowing that it was a forty, is it a private road or is it, or is it a public, the public road, it should be private, right?
Okay, it's absolutely, alright. To share a private drive.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so that's the ordinance, if you have a shared private drive, can be, you have to be forty foot off that driveway also. So I guess it wasn't, it must not have been. Uh, at all, when, when the house to the north was on, because it was a shared driveway, then two and half to ten feet.
Correct.
That's why it's, uh. Right, I mean, I mean.
And they get their.
Right. The driveway is south.
It's classified differently than.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, but this is, yeah, this is going your way right now. You've got your rear setback. Uh, we're just now talking about the, the setback. For the placement from the north property line.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm thrilled, the, the, I know, I don't know if I'm gonna put a ten foot back, but I just, I figured, I wanted to line up with the house to the north and be. Not stick the house out, but. And, yeah, I'd love, I'd love to. It, well, I'll take what I can get, you know, twelve feet.
I, I mean, it's up to everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just not me, I, it's just my personal feeling on it, it's just that's where I stand, is that there seems to be. A way to be very compliant. And still offer the best possible position on the north offside of the private. Shared drive.
Mister Chairman, I feel a lot more comfortable if it was the fifteen. I think we're really stretching the envelope here.
I'll agree with that. So we, I, I mean, I guess from what I'm hearing, just with these comments. That there would be a motion to deny this. Unless you'd be willing to accept.
I'll take what I, yeah, fifteen feet, yeah.
So if that's. That's what you can agree on, and we can, we can say that that's gonna be the case, and we won't have to review this. Is that right?
Well, we can still have.
Oh, so we're still with the forty, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I keep thinking we're complying, but for ten, I don't know why, sorry. Okay, so the applicant is. Is open to the fifteen foot. Uh, lesser relaxation. On the. Side setback or front setback of forty feet is required, so.
Is the chair comfortable in making motion? I would support it.
Well, someone wants to be into it, but I. I will make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to. Approve a lesser relaxation. Of fifteen feet in lieu of the ten feet requested for a side setback where a front setback of forty feet is required. Based on section thirty-eight seventy. Of the zoning ordinance. And these four standards can be met. First being that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area yard setbacks, frontage height, bulk per density. Or other regulation would render conformity. With those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. In this case, the front setback requirement requires a depth of the parcel potentially unbillable if four and four, still would be unnecessarily burdensome for the small private road. Therefore, I feel like this standard could be met. Second standard, that granted the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant. As well as to the property owners in the zoning district. The lesser relaxation. That that apply for would give substantial relief to the property owner and be more consistent with justice to the other property owners in the district. Lesser variance. Uh, could be provided, and that's what we're doing. Um, creating this lesser relaxation. To allow the property owners to use the property in an unexpected way without burdening other property owners in the district. I feel that standard is met. Uh, third standard, that the plight of the property owner applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property. Not due to general conditions of the zoning district. Um, again. In this case, a small private road adjacent to the property to the north creates a very unique circumstance that generally found in the zoning district. Because of that, I do feel that the standard. Can be met. And the last standard, um, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created, and we've heard it over and over, but this is, this was, uh, partitioned off this way before anybody here was involved. Um, therefore, this owner did not create the practical difficulties alleged, so this standard can be met. So, um. Do I have support?
Support for the motion.
Have support. Amika? Do you roll call?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
On this team, now?
Yes.
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 Sure.
Yes. Okay. So you've got a, a lesser relaxation, but you do have approval for the fifteen foot setback. Thank you. Okay. Um, at this time. I will open up. For public comment. So if there's anyone here tonight that would like to. Step to the podium and have any remarks for us regarding anything, uh, now's your time. So. If there's, is there anything publicly at all, not regarding this case, but. If there's none, I'm gonna close public comment. Okay. Closing public comment. Time, so. You have something, Mika? No. I thought you were gonna say something today. No. Okay, okay, um. You're, you're welcome to stay and talk amongst yourselves, we are, I'm gonna, at this time, um, I'm gonna make a motion. That we enter into closed session pursuant to session eight, one H. For the Open Meetings Act to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure pursuant to session thirteen, one G for the Freedom of Information Act, so.
Support.
All favor? Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Alright, so we'll enter in a closed session meeting. Ready? Make a motion to go into open session.
Support.
All favor? Alright, we're back in. Open session. Which brings us to our next item. For the next meeting scheduled for Monday, March third. Is everybody here? For that?
Yes.
There's two? Thanks, Mika. Okay. So. Brings us to our next item for adjournment, so do I have a motion to adjourn? So.
Support.
Support, alright, perfect. All favor? Alright, hi. Motion carries, we're adjourned.